Okay, it looks like the council is all here. And with that, we'll call the Talent City Council regular meeting of May 4th to order at 6:51. Roll call, please.
That's the clerk.
Here.
Counselor Ponamriff.
Here.
Counselor Grayer.
Here.
Counselor Pessizo.
Here.
Counselor Byers.
Yeah.
Counselor Perry Miller. And Mayor Ayersfod.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is item 2.1, opportunity to interpret meeting into Spanish. Hector?
This is a question for the public. If anybody would like this meeting translated into Spanish, we would request that they raise their hand now. You know, pregunta para el público, si alguien, this is the answer, you know, interpretar español por favor, as some money. And I'll watch the attendees for anyone who's raised their hand.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Anybody? Jordan?
Yeah, I would request the mayor to remove item 10.1 from the agenda. And we had some great comments come in after we published the agenda packet that we are running by the attorney for some potential language changes, and she was not able to get done in time for tonight.
Thank you, Jordan. And Counselor Ponamriff?
Yeah, so this is in that same regard. So this is the, this was the language around the ordinance regarding the planning commission. So in looking at that, I found two things that, two other things that had come up in, over the years of things that could use changing, and I put that in an email to a couple of you. So, so here's my whole concern about whether to bring that up tonight and get a consensus from council is so you don't have to make all these round trips. So if we're like, you know, in the second reading and somebody says, oh, change this, you have to go back to square one. It's, it's, I was going to suggest it as a discussion item, just so you could get a consensus from, or a feel from the council on these items. I'm happy to talk it through. Just to, just to kind of speed things up in the long run. So if that's so, so looking and seeing nodding, so, so my request after all of that, Madam Mayor, is to add an item. I think under new business, if that's, sorry.
I think we can probably just leave, Jordan, if, what do you think about just leaving 10.1 on the agenda? And let's go ahead and open it up, knowing that we would probably postpone it as we are seeking further. And then that way we won't lose any time if and you were raising your hand, is there?
I was going to make the same recommendation of, let's leave it on, we could discuss. We're also hoping, we do, we would like to open the public hearing tonight as well for any public comment, or if we want to discuss then, and then we can continue it, that hearing for the next meeting as well.
Okay, and just, we can talk more about it when we get there, but I want to make sure, I know that sometimes when you leave the public hearing open, would we be doing that, or would we be opening it and closing it? I think we'd have to leave it open.
Chris and I looked into this, and Chris, and overrule me if you think, you know, as long as we make the intention clear that we'll be continuing it at the next meeting, we can close it and then reopen it as a continuance. I'm not yet being rebutted, but we can try it out.
That, that's, that's correct. That's, that's, I think that will work. If we open it, close it, and continue it to the next meeting, and then open it again.
Yeah, either way is fine with me, and I'll take staff recommendation. The only, you know, the only reason I bring it up is leaving it open allows community input between meetings to the record. And, you know, I don't see a lot of that happening on this item, so it doesn't matter one way or the other. I'll just go with staff recommendations, that sounds good. All right, so we'll tab 10.1's back on the agenda. And with that, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and move to item number four, which is community announcements. Anybody? Counselor Clark?
Yeah. At the last meeting, council approved some money for some trees on a patch of land just south of Talon Avenue, across from what we've been calling the Triangle Bed. It was only about four days after that meeting that those trees were installed. And drive by and check them out, they look nice. Additional to that, there are a few more days to fill out the survey regarding the Greenway revisioning master plan. You can go to envisionbearcreek.com to fill out that survey. And also next Wednesday, May 11th, there will be a couple of virtual open house sessions. The first one starting at four o'clock, the second one starting at 5:30, and having live Spanish translation available. And those will be another opportunities for people to give input on the values and priorities that they want to see incorporated into a master plan for the Greenway.
That's awesome. Hector?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, well put, Councilor Clark, thank you for bringing up the Greenway revisioning. We've been promoting it heavily on our social media. At City Hall, we have the Art2Go pollinator stencil kits available from T-Pak. And they're at City Hall and on a table right as you enter in the main foyer area. The stencil kits are free, and anyone can pick them up during City Hall hours, 8:30 to 12:30 in the morning, and 1:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon. And this weekend is, there's a lot of events happening. There's a Mother's Day Maker event at Sweet Beat, and that's going to be from eight in the morning till three in the afternoon. There'll be various vendors selling locally crafted items. And in addition to the Mother's Day Maker event, there'll be the Town Club, the Town Garden Club is hosting their yearly plant sale at 50 Talon Avenue from nine to three in the afternoon. And I heard they have a lot of the famous Talon tomatoes starters available. Though that's real, the Talon tomatoes are real apparently, so.
I have the t-shirts, many of them. They, they used to do one different one a year. I have a nice little collection. Anything else, Hector?
Oh, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
So much, your outreach, this outreach position is really paying off. Counselor Byers?
Oh, I just wanted to add that the Mother's Day artisan event is actually a co-event between Sweet Beat Station and Talon Maker City. So we're going to have makers and crafters spread out all over East Main Street. It's going to be really cool.
And music too. Okay, fantastic, sounds like it's going to be a great day in, in Talon. All right, moving on then to item number five, which is speakers. Hector, do you have your hand back up, or?
I'm sorry about that, Madam Mayor, forgot to take it down.
Don't apologize, we're always happy to hear from you. Number five, speakers heard on non-agenda items. Do we have any speaker request forms?
Mayor, before the start of the meeting, I checked, and there were no requests submitted.
Great, I'm going to shut my office door really quick. My dog just got home. Thank you. Okay. I did notice that we have our county liaison with us tonight. I always like to recognize when Commissioner Dave Daughter joins us. Appreciate your great work, bringing the message from Talon to the county and vice versa when, when it makes sense. Also, former Mayor Chris Love is always happy to have dignitaries in the audience. All right, moving on to 6.1 Oregon Steel Home Project Staff Report.
Us tonight to share a project he's been working on called Oregon Steel Home Project. So I'd love to invite John Norman up for presentation. John, I do have your slides available. And I'm going to just attempt something new tonight with council. Where, John, we tend to limit our public presentations to 15 minutes or less. So I'm going to go ahead and flash up on the screen, just a warning when we hit a three-minute mark, and a warning with a one-minute mark, just to help keep us on time tonight. We'll give it a go. And with that, I'd love to welcome John to share about the Oregon Steel Home Project.
Welcome, John, if you can unmute yourself, and once again, state your name and city for the regular council meeting record.
Great, so my name is John Norman, I'm in Grants Pass. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, excellent, so I'll just forge ahead. My thanks go to my 13-year-old daughter, who's arranging to loan me her, her phone for the next couple of minutes. And she's very excited to be here. So the project that I'm here to talk to you about today is something that came out of a grant funding, a NOFA, an application that we filled out, and it's about two weeks, three weeks ago. And the idea principally is to provide builders with alternatives that would include a stick-built home covered with a cladding steel that, of course, in the fire would keep people from being burned out. And because of high temperatures, steel melting would also give time for people to leave if they had to. So there are number of benefits to steel, which we're all fairly aware of. But I think in the building industry, people tend to do a lot of the same thing over and over. So our project was not only to offer a response, the art, the NOFA, and suggest that we build 56 homes in in the county, but also to go around the state in various areas, east, west, north, south, and conduct classes so that builders could learn how to do this, or if people wanted to put these things together themselves, who's very capable of doing with a couple of hours training. Very simple building skills. People could launch off and create these kinds of homes themselves. They, I have some examples on the screen, and you see at the bottom, or in the center of your screen, two different styles that we have. One is on the right, and that's a traditional closet style. The one on the left is somewhat different, of course, has the extended verticals, and is again the same kind of steel, but it's a a more dynamic look. And that, I think, is something that people appreciate if they're building something for an office or, or a home. So, um, I could share my screen. Is it possible for you all to see my screen? Do I take the presenter?
John, you should be able to share now.
Mia's working her magic. You can see on my screen. Here's, I'll just go through these, I assume you can see these. This is a very large steel building. It's about 190 feet, 43 feet side to side. It's actually in Detroit. There are quite a few, a few pictures of the the tube we call it. These are some of the smaller buildings that people could live in and work in. And they include integrated garages. This is some of the work that goes inside. See, traditional stick-built homes here. And the interior, which of course holds the insulation in place. This is recognize this as talent. Jordan had a suggestion as to what we might do in talent, and there were, I think this these baseball fields here. It's what you thought would be an ideal place for the 56 homes that we proposed in the in the grant. This is an example of a house that as you can see, has a sort of stem wall and vertical sides. And is a smaller version of some of the houses that we can provide. This, you can see, is also one of these steel homes. But of course, it has this sort of gallery here and stairs. I guess the point I'm making here is that there are a lot of varieties of things that can go into people's workplace or home, and protect them. This is a bunker, something that we could make that's underground, keeps you safe during a fire. Here's the tube. Good, better idea of what it looks like as we go to the next picture. Want to make sure all these are in. There's some really beautiful homes that are made of these materials. Certainly one. These are small rooms that people could have in the garage, for instance. Some there are some food stuff stored here, and obviously these beds for comfort. And you almost see here the filtration system for air. Little bit larger safety door, a marine door here. And so we're very concerned about people being safe in fires. And what I'm trying to do here, to give you an idea of the different kinds of things people can do to be safe. Here in the bottom of the house, you can see a safe room. We don't tend to think of these things in Oregon very much, but they are available. This is a bunker. It looks quite comfortable, I think. Here again is what bunker might look like. Going down the stairs to enter, and bedrooms, bunk beds, kitchen, bathroom, master bedroom. This would be 20 feet under the ground. It could be used for a, you could attack or something. Long this long. Here we see some more homes.
John, I'm going to do a quick interruption, I apologize. I think the, the screen is really hard to see, and so I might make a recommendation if we stop screen sharing and then have you submit these photos via email. I'm happy to share them with council and add them to the website.
Okay. Good. So, last thing I'd like to say, is that we do have this grant. It does require something a little bit unusual, which is for us to specify the site that we'd like to have this 56 home project installed. And at the moment, we don't really have a site. Plus, the land is millions of dollars. So when I presented this to Jordan, she immediately had the idea that we look at the sites that you saw earlier and see if one could be converted to the proper zoning. So that's where we stand with this. The grant does go away pretty quick. The application date, I think, reverts June, June 1st. So we could put the 56 homes, if awarded, on the baseball fields, if we're quick enough. I'll leave that to the side, if that makes sense. And that's about all I have. So the project is educational in some senses, and it's a safety project in another sense. Please let me know if you have any interest or any thoughts and how this might work for you, or your families, matter of fact.
Well, thank you, John, so much, and my hat's off to you for pivoting to working with the technology as it is for you tonight. I bully, bully for you for a good, a good shot at it, a good attempt. I got to see some stuff on there, so pretty interesting stuff. Does anybody have any questions or comments? You know, John, how this typically works is if we talk about things that we want to see on a future agenda, we have an opportunity later in the agenda, other business. That's not to say that we would ask anybody to hang around for, because it can be a long night. But if, if we do bring it up on other business, Jordan will be happy to get back to you and let you know what our thoughts are so far. Sound good? Oh, I think we lost him. All right, well, great, all right, let's go ahead and sally on then with 7.1 is the city manager's report.
Great, thank you, Mayor. You all have my report from the agenda packet. I'm still working on just some larger scale projects moving ahead. I do want to make one clarification. I have a dual poll out for you all to schedule a study session to look at some urban renewal numbers. And I am finding there's a large traffic jam for scheduling meetings in May. So that may be pushed to June, depending on holes in the schedules that we can find. May is a popular month for meetings. And with that, I'll open up to any questions from the council. And with that, I'll open up to any questions from the council.
All right, Counselor Clark and then Council Penamriff and then Council Greider.
I think that was the reverse order, actually, Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry. My screen, my screen was off and I came on and saw all your hands up at once. So I took you in order on my screen. So let's just go ahead. Counselor Clark?
Sure. Yeah, it was about, about a year ago that Talent Urban Forestry Committee volunteer, city staff and employees of specific power planted about seven trees along East Main there. One of those trees in front of the Camelot was inadvertently dug up and removed. And it was, oh, you know, maybe a couple of months ago now, the Urban Forestry Committee made a recommendation that after considering hearing the concerns of, of Dan Hauser from Camelot Theater, looked again at the site, really recommended replacing that tree that was removed. And I was just wondering if we could have an update on the status of that.
I think also Clark and my apologies and believe that was on my to do list and is just not been prioritized. So I will focus on that. A question I have for you and I can ask this of the Urban Forestry Committee. Is the windows plant still open or should I aim to plant in the fall?
I would say if it happens in the next little while here that we could go ahead and it would be better to go ahead and do it sooner. If it can happen in the next few weeks.
I appreciate that reminder. Thank you.
Sure. Yep.
Is this one of those events, Counselor Clark, where the cool weather is in our favor?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. The cool weather is definitely in our favor this spring, embracing it for all kinds of reasons.
I think we're gonna, we're up for more of it as well. What I saw the forecast. Counselor Penamriff?
Yes, thanks. I have a question for you, Jordan, on the property tax stabilization fund. So that was a one time deposit of almost a million dollars. That that represents how many years of property taxes? For for talent.
Yeah, let me, I'm just gonna, I have the budget right here in front of me of what we collected in the last few years. And we collect about a million in taxes per year. I'm sorry, a million in property taxes per year. Give or take. And so I think the intent of those funds is that we lost property tax revenue due to the fire. And at the time did not expect to regain that property tax revenue for several years at rebuild. There is no stated definition in the bill that appropriated those funds to us of how long they expect it to last.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to make you do math. That wasn't my intention. But that is basically kind of the they didn't say a number of years, but that's it. We're not, we're not going to be going back for more.
Yes, that was a one time.
And that was what was distributed to the counties and then the county distributed it to us.
Correct. Yep. To every taxing jurisdiction that had impacts.
All right. And I guess the calculation was done by the tax assessor?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I can share the breakdown if council's interested or directly counsel for them off with you as well. I have that.
If there's something easy to forward, I'd be curious just to have my eyes glance over it to see if I learned something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Counselor Greider?
I'm good. Thank you.
Right then, if there's no other questions, thank you, Jordan, for your staff report. And we'll go ahead and move on to item number eight, which is public hearings, public hearing to amend the talent municipal code for section 220. But we're just we are, we are going to open the public hearing. Is that right? Do I have that right? Yes. Okay. Let me get the language out. I did get it sent to me. I just have to get out of the screen real quick. So one second.
And I can pull it up as well if useful.
That's probably more useful.
Mayor, can you see that on the screen?
So when I get down to number, when I start to approach five, if you can start to scroll, that'll help. Okay.
Oh, Mayor, you are on mute right now.
Um, this item is 8.1. It's a public hearing for amendment to talent municipal code section 2.20 planning commission staff report.
I'd like to invite Kristen May as our community development director to present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor. Are you, are you, are you planning on reading the opening statement? Or would you like me to go forward with it with staff report prior to that?
You know, is the Stafford report in the statement? I think it is. You're right. I don't know when this, when this, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I think Jordan has it on the screen for you to.
Yeah. Okay. Here we go. Thank you. Opening statement for the legislative public hearing. The talent city council has the authority to hold of legislative hearings in accordance with Oregon public meeting laws described in ORS 192.610 through 192.710. The talent city council makes the final decision to approve, modify, or deny. The city planner has determined that the approval criteria that apply to the following application or issue currently before the city council are as follows.
Title 18 zoning and chapter 2.20 for the planning commission.
Evidence and testimony in this hearing must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the city's zoning code, comprehensive plan subdivision code or other applicable land use and development related regulations that the person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond accordingly to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. Before the end of the hearing, any participant may request a continuance. In addition, whether or not there is continuance, participant may request that the record of the proceedings remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. The city council will consider whether or not they will continue the hearing or leave the record open for a specified length of time for new written testimony or evidence. When called to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and residential address for the public record. Please direct your comments to the applicable criteria as identified by city staff. The following time limits are allotted for public testimony. Applicant will have 15 minutes. Individuals will have five. An individual representing a group will have 10 minutes applicants rebuttal 10 minutes. After testimony is, excuse me, after listening to testimony and considering the evidence, the city council may vote to approve, approve with conditions or deny the applications. Unless the matter is continued or tabled to another date specific meeting. If you have any questions or do not understand the procedure, please raise your hand now and or please raise your hand to ask them now. All right. Am I still reading this? Okay. So do you want to do a staff report before we close the hearing? Or am I looking for, does anybody want to? Let's see. I'm a little lost here.
Well, I think it's, it's up to you whether you would like to, to hear the staff report. We can postpone the staff report until the following until it's continued to the next meeting, or you can hear the staff report. I can repeat the staff report at the next meeting and you could, but you could still listen to public testimony tonight if there is any.
Are there any speakers on this item? Well, why don't we just go ahead and do the whole, so you don't have to repeat it twice? And we'll do it at the next meeting.
Very good.
So did I just open the public hearing?
You have not opened the public hearing, I don't believe.
Okay, so is it necessary for me to open the public hearing and close the public hearing? Okay, I just want to make sure I do it correct. So at this time I'll open the public hearing. And there are no speakers request form. So I'm going to close the public hearing. All right.
And then we also share that we will continue the public hearing on the May 18th city council meeting.
Right. I'll entertain a motion to continue the meeting. Anybody? Thank you, Council Penamriff.
Ms. Madam Mary, move to continue this public hearing to the May 18th city council meeting.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to continue this public hearing to the May 18th city council meeting. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penamriff?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Pesteza?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Param Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
You. Well, that was a little clumsy. I apologize, but thanks for getting us through it. And Kristen, thank you for your guidance. I appreciate it. Okay, item number nine is the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes and review the check register? And review the survey results? And is there, first, let me ask, is there anything on there that anybody wants to break out? Right, seeing none? Any comments or edits? Council Penamriff?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question about the check register. And it feels like this is something I should know, but I don't. There's a whole bunch of $192 payments. I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering what all those payments are to various people. It looks like it's all the same thing. And thought maybe we could meet Tessa.
So if you want to.
Hello there. I do.
Hi.
Hello. If my memory serves well, it would be for the VOC testing. If that's what I remember, that would be on the check register.
Well, that sounds that sounds great. Do you have, I just wondered if you had video, you could wave at us. Just we haven't met yet.
Next meeting.
Okay. Thanks. I'll have another dumb question for you then.
Okay.
We're, we're doing Tessa as new finance director heard the view with the, with the budget committee. Roll out. And I will, I would love to share about that VOC testing program. So the city of town is actually reimbursing folks who paid for their own VOC testing, which is a test required to reconnect our water line. So, you know, the numbers off the top of my head, I forgot, but I think close 100 households out of 130 submitted their invoices that we were able to get them reimbursement for. So I think a little over $30,000 put back into our community.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, so with that, if there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Penamriff?
Madam Chair, I moved to approve the consent calendar.
I can.
You have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penamriff?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Pesteza?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Param Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is item 10.1. Ordinance 2022-972-0 to amend talent municipal code section 2.20 planning commission staff.
I'd like to invite Kristen May as our director after provide a brief report. Kristen, go ahead if you can hear us.
I'm sorry, I missed that, Jordan.
Oh, no problem. If you want to just give a quick summary of the intent of the recommended amendment changes.
Oh, yes, certainly. Sorry. I thought we were over that issue. Yeah. So the intent, what, what's been, as you all probably know, we've lost at least four, we've lost four planning commissioners in the recent, in this past year. And as a result, we, and we've been lucky enough to get a planning commission, one planning commissioner back. So we've had a hard time with a quorum. And when we have a hard time with a quorum, that means that we're canceling meetings and sometimes we don't know, people don't know particularly when they're, when they're going to be gone because life happens. And there's times when we are canceling at the last minute, and that's not good necessarily for the applicant or for our planning commissioners and staff. So that is the intent behind this is we were trying to remedy that what currently the code reads that we have to have at least four planning for commissioners as a quorum. And we're trying to take that out of our ordinance and allow that to be put in our bylaws. And then there's also an added bit of script in regards to possibly the planning commission. If they are unable to perform their duties for a particular reason due to lack of quorum, and we're up against 100 day timeframe for approving a project, then in that case, the city council would act in their stead so that we can move projects along in a timely manner and not run up against that 100 day period. So that's, that's the basics behind the updating the ordinance and the bylaws for the planning commission.
Thank you, Kristen. Are there any questions? Counselor Penamriff?
I just have a, I have a couple of comments if now is the right time. Yeah, first of all, I really applaud the work that Kristen did. I think that the, it was really great. The changes. The spirit of the changes. I had a quibble with the wording around quorum. I felt it, it didn't actually define what a quorum was as I understood it. And so I sent an email and I said, no, no, no. Anyway. The, we have had, you know, I don't, I don't know what, what people were thinking when they wrote these things down in the first place. Just for fun, because it was late at night, I went to the talent municipal code and I went to administration, chapter two, and I just looked at all the, the committees and commissions, just the membership section. And I was looking at that language in particular, because we, we have had the problem of the wording. And I don't know, Jordan, if I could impose upon you to show that email because I had some colors in it. It might just be easier than me babbling through it. But there were, there were two things that actually came up within the last three and a half years that were sticking points and took up, you know, quite a bit of meeting time in terms of trying to make sense of it. Yeah. So the first, the first one has to do with membership. And I think the intention of it was to say, hey, everybody has to be within city limits, but one person can be outside city limits as long as they're within the UGB. But the way it's worded is it says, one member may live outside and implying that we don't care about the other six members. They can live anywhere. So, and I don't think that was the intent. So my suggestion was to say no more than one member may live outside. And I, and I just stole that language from one of the other committees or commissions that got it right. And there were several committees or commissions that got it wrong in our, in our, in the talent municipal code. So I was suggesting to change to that language. So I was suggesting to change to that language and to also to take out the part about the UGB. All the planning commissioners have to go through the same process that the mayor has to interview and approve them, and the council has to approve them. So I don't see that there needs to be the limit of the urban growth boundary. And with the other committees, with the exception of one, they say one or two members may live outside the city of talent, and they don't specify the UGB boundary. The other thing seemed to be just a typo. For the planning commission, it's the mayor and one appointed counselor, who are the ex officios. But the wording is kind of awkward. It said the mayor or appointed city counselor are designated as ex officio members. So clearly it meant the plural, not one or the other. But it said or instead of and and anyway, we've always interpreted it to be two people. So those are the two changes I'd recommend. The second one, I think it's just a scrivener's error. The first one, certainly the not more than, I think was just an inadvertent error. But to say they don't have to live within the UGB would be a substantive change regarding the membership. So anyway, I'm just asking that since we're looking at chapter two, or sorry, section two with the planning commission that we that we get those things taken care of as well.
Well, I appreciate, personally, I appreciate these, these suggested changes, especially the one, the first one that you mentioned. Well, both of them, they've, both of them have resulted in some pretty silly discussions at the planning level and a lot of time wasting. So I appreciate the fact that you are looking to clean this up at this time. So I, I mean, I, I feel like we could, we could anyway, adopt the new language with the amendments. But it might just be easier for us to, or cleaner at this point for us to just, as Eleanor suggested, take a consensus and put it into the other two edits that are before the attorney right now. And then, then we could just have a whole clean copy. Does the, does the staff see any challenges with that?
No, I see no challenges with the clarity changes. I would love to have a discussion around the including or not including the UGB requirement for membership.
Which we can do at the public hearing.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, it, like, like it, the outcomes was all the same, like at some point in time, we can still have this discussion. So so if there's no unless you, unless you want to discuss it tonight, if, if I'm missing something, please speak up because they don't want to, I don't want to rush us out of something that might, I might be missing. No? Okay. So if there's no objections to putting those, putting those suggestions in front of the attorney and I buy no objections, I'm looking for a consensus without objection. Raise your hand if you object. All right, we have a consensus and we can discuss the the matter, all of the matters in the next meeting. Great. Item 10.2 is approval of the Creekside play structures type and placement. Staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This was an item from last meeting. Let me pull it up here for us. Just some questions on the Creekside Park play structure. This is one of the objectives of our parks master plan is to put a play structure at Creekside. The Parks Master Plan calls for putting an inclusive play structure in that location. Our Parks Commission, after discussion and talking with a play structure expert, I would say, for lack of better term, you know, recommends that we change Creekside to a non-inclusive play structure and prioritize bringing an inclusive play structure at Chuck Roberts. I did want to throw up on the screen here, an example of, an example of the actual proposed play structure that the city has a quote on right now for Creekside. This has gone in front of the Parks Recreation Commission, and they have given it the thumbs up. But two questions that I'm asking for counsel tonight. First question being, are we comfortable with putting a non-inclusive playground into the Creekside area? And then the second question is the location. And this was a discussion that started last meeting. You know, there's two options for placing this play structure, option one, where it was originally marked for our master plan is what I'm calling the south end, this way is north of Wagner Creek Park. There is some space restrictions. We will have to remove one to two trees to be able to place it there. If we did not want to remove any trees, the other option is to place it at the north end of the park. Where you see the circles. My caveat is this drawing is not to scale. So no, the play structure won't likely cover as much area as I've marked on the map. And that is just my own engineering skills is the reason for that. You know, with that, I just would love to turn it back to counsel for discussion and staff is present to answer any questions. Donna could not make tonight's meeting. But we will have Brett on hand.
Counsel.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm wondering whether in the selection of the the play structure, which I think is a good play structure. It's you know, as it's the right age and it's fine. I'm just wondering. So I, I went through the catalog and I looked for things at that price range or cheaper. And, and I saw some other ones I liked better. So I was just wondering, not that I'm a connoisseur, but I'm just wondering about the process. So did, did the, did the Parks Commission? Was the Parks Commission given some criteria and go through and select through the catalog? Or was it a matter of approving the staff recommendation of the structure that we're seeing tonight?
Yeah, so the Parks Commission did not go through the catalog. This was a suggestion from staff. We found a play structure that would fit the area and we took that to the Parks Commission. And, and they agreed that it would be a good structure for the year.
Brett, can I ask a further clarification on that? Actually, did staff work with Playworks, who is the play structure provider? For their recommendation as well for.
We did, we had them come out and they, we, we recognized that in the Parks Master Plan, it was supposed to be an inclusive play structure. The recommendation was that it was not the right area for an inclusive play structure. They even went as far excuse me, as to go to Chuck Roberts and they thought they made a recommendation that that would be a better spot for an inclusive play structure. And that this location would be more suitable for a more traditional type structure because of the parking constraints and the small, the smaller.
Thank you, Brett.
Counsel.
I think this is going to be a stupid question and wishful thinking, but could the trees be replaced or replant or replant? Is there space nearby that they, that trees could replace those that had to be removed? Or is there any options with the tree removal?
Yeah. So if option one is chosen as the location, there would be one, probably two trees that need to be removed. But the option two location would be a perfect area to, to plant maybe even more than two trees. If, if the play structure is not going anywhere, there were, I believe, I'm not don't quote me on this, but I believe there was at least two trees in that area before the fire that they burned in the fire.
Okay, so with option, oh, sorry. With option one, though, there couldn't be trees planted nearby that would kind of replace those that have to be removed. Correct? There's no space to to replace those.
I'm sure we can, we can find a place for one, for one tree. But the, the, if we choose option one, that the area around the play structure, no play structure takes up a certain amount of square feet, but there has to be, you know, a barrier with the soft fall that takes up a larger footprint. And from the pathway to the creek, to the area along the riparian area that we can go, it absorbs all of that area. At option one. So, so yeah, maybe we could find another area in that vicinity that we could plant another tree. But, but there's quite a few trees there. And we, we, when we went out there and measured it, we were trying to be creative so that the least amount of trees would have to be removed.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Counsel.
Yeah. I think I prefer the option one location just because it, it feels more public. Option two. It just, it's just the way it's tucked in between the walkway and those people's houses. And it's not visible from the street. I just don't know that it would get as much use. I'm okay with removing a couple of those trees on the sidewalk. They're public trees. So I think the city be obligated to mitigate for those. And I think the area to the north where option two is drawn in would be a great place to do planting much like that. That was proposed for Cameron Springs. A concern is, you know, it's, you've got the, you've got a, the slope dropping off to the creek there, the option one location. There's going to need to be some you know, something to stop people from falling in the creek, right? So is it, is, has that been thought about? I mean, I hate to see a fence there. I could imagine. I could imagine a temporary fence and some vegetation, riparian vegetation planted densely there to serve that function. But I just wonder if that has been discussed. I don't remember discussing it myself.
Yeah, so, so the, the barrier around the play structure is, is designed for, if, if you're concerned about the children playing on the play structure falling, the, the perimeter, you know, you can see there, the black area is it would be not rubber matting, but the rubber, you know, the little pieces of rubber as opposed to the wooden softball. And it is designed so that if there's a fall from, from the actual play structure, that it would encompass, you know, any, any of those falls, so they would land on that area. And you know, if, if the concern is, you know, maybe a child running across playground and ending up in the creek. Yeah, I think, you know, just a hedge or some, some bushes planted along that area. There's enough, there's enough area left between the the perimeter that plays structure and the creek to plant some, some kind of foliage that could prevent that as well.
Thank you. I think it's a it's a good impetus to plant some riparian species there along the creek and address the blackberries maybe around the same time. I think that'd be ideal.
Okay, Counsel.
Yeah, I wanted to say that, yeah, to me, there's no contest whether option one or option two, I prefer option one. But for the reason that Counselor Clark said it's open and also just remembering that neighborhood. When the houses are there, there's no fences. It would pretty much be in somebody's backyard. And I don't think unless that was Grilinda living there, and then everybody would come. But if that wasn't the case, it, it just wasn't really a good, a good public fit. So I actually had a follow up question, if that's okay. I see, I'm going to let Counselor Barriers talk first.
Counsel.
Thank you. I agree with everything that's being said about the two options. I do wonder, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to be bringing this up as part of the plans. It might fall under the purview of a different set of plans. I'm wondering if there's something we can put in to improve pedestrian safety when crossing to that portion, especially since there are, we're hoping small children will be crossing the street to be using that space. And there is a community with lots of small children almost directly across the street. I'm wondering if that is something to consider with the budget that we're working on for this project, or if that's a different project's budget that needs to be looked at simultaneously. But.
You're talking about a crosswalk at that intersection?
A crosswalk, perhaps even with flashing lights. I just walking path there, there, I love how many kids are playing in that neighborhood. And it also, you know, kids, kids are going to be excited about going to go play. They're necessarily going to be taking all safety precautions crossing the street.
Counsel. Counsel.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more, Counselor Barriers. That was my thought as well. And I think it's, it's definitely within a mile of the schools. Safe routes to school. That might be a great project for safe rights to school to pick up. Yeah. So I did have a question regarding the criteria for the selection of the play structure. So I did a little, a little bit of research and yeah, on the, on the website, they talk about something called fall height. And I imagine that's the, the height at which a kid might fall from because of the, the structure. And they vary. There's some, this one is, I think, seven foot is, is the fall height. So that would be the, at the tallest point from which a kid could fall. Some of them are as low as four feet. So I'm wondering about, so I imagine that was a criteria as well as I imagine the, you know, just the surface area, the footprint. I'm, and, and the age, the, the play structures give you an age range. So I'm, I'm wondering when staff made the selection, oh, and price. Staff made the selection. Is that pretty much the criteria? Were there other criteria that, that you considered?
No, that was pretty much it. And we didn't, we didn't even, you know, to be, to be completely honest with you, we did it for an age group. And I can't remember what that was right now, but we, when we selected this one, it was for a certain age group.
Five through 12.
Yeah. And then it was for the, the footprint that would fit in the area. Because as, you know, in your research, I'm sure you saw that they promote a lot of play structures that would not fit in that area.
Yeah, I saw some big fancy ones. I did see a slightly smaller one with a lower fall, that fall height. That was quite a bit, that was cheaper, that came in under 20,000 that I liked, that I would play on. Because I'm afraid of slides. But I think that's probably a personal thing.
Maybe it needs to be said that that, that quote is for the full installation. It's not just for the play structure itself. That includes a contractor to install it as well.
Yeah, which was my, the other thing was, I thought to the play structure, we got it at 20,000 and now it's listed at 25,000. So good deal. But the, the installation is 33,000. And, and then there's all this stuff like the, the stuff you put underneath and, and sacks and stuff like that. So so that's, so about half the price, about half the budget is on installation. Is that, is that normal for a play structure? Or is that par for the course?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty, pretty common. We, we experienced similar thing when we replaced the Cameron Springs play structure that burned in the fire. We actually were not able to, with the insurance. We actually were not able to, with the insurance money that we received, and that we were not able to. Fully fund that project and Public Works actually did the preparation and purchased soft falls so that we could. So that we can make that project work. So yeah, it's, it's pretty common.
So thanks for, yeah, thanks for doing that. Is this something that volunteers could help with? I mean, obviously, there's a lot of. You want, there's expertise involved, but is there, is there support that volunteers could do to bring down the price?
Yeah, no, not, not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, you know, the, the contractor will be in there with a, a large machine. Digging, digging out the ground to the grade. And then they'll install those, those poles will be installed in concrete. Low grade and then the soft fall coming in with a big truck that, you know, they'll either blow it in or they'll, they'll place it by hand. If they were to place it by hand, which is, is likely not going to be the case, then I suppose it wouldn't be a volunteer effort. But once we sign the contract, you know, we're going to be paying, we're going to be paying the cost of that contract regardless of whether we have. Volunteer helping.
And I guess it's, and it's too late to swap out the play structure? For a similar priced one, if we, if people wanted to?
I suppose it's not. To keep it inside of this budget year, the funding for this year. It certainly would. It would be imperative that we kept that structure. If we, if we were going to kick the can down the road, so to speak, on it. Then we could trade it for whatever structure. Keep in mind that the cost of these types of. Structures and the construction are going up almost daily and. You know, depending on how far we wanted to kick the can down the road, we might, we might see an increase in that cost as well.
Thanks Brett.
So am I hearing you say that you saw one that you liked better in the same price range that you want the city staff to count, to consider? I think that's a reasonable ask.
If, I don't know if the, yeah, so I don't know if this is like, you know, pre-ordered or what. Looking through the catalog, so I don't remember the structure that we have. In the library, I've seen it a million times, but I'm having trouble remembering it, but it struck me as, you know, fairly ordinary. I think the Chuck Roberts one. Struck me as, as more interesting. The, I saw one for under twenty thousand that had kind of like these things that you balance on. It's, it's almost like a little leapfroggy things. And I, as a parent, well, my parents' kids are big now, but the, the fall height was four feet. And it was just slightly smaller and it had a couple of cool slides and things. One of the things I like about this structure is the shade, the shading things, although I don't know if, how effective those are. For on a hot day, if you're sliding down in shorts. They look nice, but I don't, I don't know if they're super effective. If, you know, and I, I hope that, you know, the trees around will, will grow and hopefully. Eventually provide some shade to those, but yeah, I did see one. That I thought was cute. I guess, I think that this would have been. I think this was, so this came up, you know, this was decided months ago. And I think in the meantime, it would have been a good community exercise to, for staff to select. A, a number of those that basically fit a criteria in terms of size and age and what have you. And have the commission. Way in on that, or even better, make it a fun little community survey. Have the kids vote, you know, as long as all the choices were something that staff approved of. It feels a little bit like a lost opportunity.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't be able to approve this project tonight? And then Brett, would you be open to seeing what. Eleanor is suggesting and just have an offline discussion about it? I mean, it's not binding or anything, but. Like.
Yeah, I suppose we'd be open, we'd be open to that. But what, what would be the council's idea about, would that, would that, would the council like staff to run that back to the Parks Commission? Because I would put, certainly put a delay on when we, when we were going to purchase this, this structure.
Yeah, that's a fair point. So you're saying that taking it back to parks would, would delay it. Further. Yeah. Well, I mean, I would trust, personally, I trust that if you, you two had a conversation Brett and you did not feel like it was. A good recommendation or that it veered too far away from the intended use, I would be comfortable with you making that. That's, that staff expertise, but on the other hand, if we can do something that is. You know. That might be. A little less ordinary is what I heard Eleanor say. You know, being open to that discussion. That friendly discussion, I don't think is a bad thing, but I, I do want to move us along here pretty soon. So Councilor Panamara?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I, I think that if, if there were time for the commission, you know, a group of people to weigh in on it. You know, because Brett might just feel sorry for me and, and agree. So I, yeah, I don't, I don't, like I say, I'm not a connoisseur. I wish there had, you know, we did have the chance to get some, some more. Community input on it with, you know, starting out with the starting point of what staff said, any of these will work. Have fun, pick something you like. That would have been good. At this point, I would not. Put my opinion above staff's, you know, by any means. I just wish there had been more, more.
All right, well, Jordan?
Yeah, I'm trying to, you know, make clear, it is at council's discretion if they would like us to go back to the table on this project. You know, the, the pros and cons, the, the. The price to pay for taking more time is just a rising cost for the play structure. But if council would like us to, to go back and, and present some options to the Parks Commission. We are happy to take the time to do that. We will just, what we would do is we would earmark these funds to be used in the next budget year.
I haven't heard that suggestion yet. I haven't heard that as a suggestion, so that, I mean, I think that's been inserted. As part of a discussion, but I haven't heard anybody suggest we do that, so. Maybe just staying, staying on the idea that if we can look for something more creative. And, and, and Councilor Panamara would like to have an offline discussion, I see that as, as being. I, I don't see that as being irregular or problematic, but if staff does, let's move on and go ahead and make a decision.
Sounds great. So Mayor, from what I'm saying, we can go ahead and make a motion tonight about inclusivity and placement. And then Councilor Panamara will go ahead and schedule that conversation with Public Works.
Councilor Panamara?
Sorry, are you ready for a motion, Madam Mayor? I move to approve the placement of a non-inclusive play structure. At the south end, option one of Creekside Park.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the placement of a non-inclusive play structure at the south end of Creekside Park. Identified as option one. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Panamara?
Yes.
Councilor Greider?
Yes.
Councilor Preciso?
Yes.
Councilor Barriers?
Yes.
Councilor Perry Miller? Motion carries, Mayor.
Great. I, I, I don't want to leave this discussion without tipping my hat to Councilor Panamara's idea that. Sometimes like public participation in selecting these play spaces. Can be good for the community and I think that's what I heard from those suggestions. So I hope that we can, we can somehow fold that into some future, you know, like I can see drawings up in a spot that, that. Where, where people get to choose. I think, I think those kinds of things do boost community morale. And I think that the results are that we get less cookie cutter and more creative. So I just wanna, I don't want to leave the conversation on a low note. I want to make sure that I acknowledge Eleanor's. Thought process there. I, I do appreciate where she was going with it. Okay. So with that, the next item on the agenda is eleven point one, project request for Cobb bus stop. Staff report, please. I, I'm, by the way, I'm gonna go dark because I'm gonna eat something, so.
Great. Yeah, so Chris Hour, who's a talent community member here, has been working on a project since pre-COVID. To replace one of the downtown town bus stops with a Cobb bus stop. As a public art project and as a. A school project to get school age kids learning about Cobb construction and permaculture. Chris has done it in front of the Talent Public Arts Committee and Top Public Arts Committee has made the recommendation. To have the city partner with Chris and RVTD for this project. But I wanted to invite Chris, who is here tonight in Aubrey. To present the project in his own words and then Aubrey can share T-PAC's response as well. So with that, Chris would love to invite you up.
Hi, can y'all hear and see me? Okay, great. Well, thanks, thanks for that introduction. It's nice to be here and see you all. Yeah, so this is a, admittedly, a, a little bit of an unusual project. I, so I'm a big Lord of the Rings token fan and. And I'm talking to you from the inside of a hobbit house that I, I built. So rather than show you a picture, I'll just show, show you back here what that looks like. And so, yeah, I just really wanted to do something. I love talent, I love our community and I just wanted to do something. To try to contribute something artistic and nice to, to our city, so. I, I love RVTD, I love what they've been doing over the years to, to serve our valley and. But the one thing that I think is still pretty unfortunate are the bus stops. And, you know, at, at best, there are these boxes of steel and plexiglass and at worst, it's just like a post. That maybe has like a tiny metal seat to sit on. You know, it's pretty pathetic for people riding the bus and so. So yeah, I just, I had this idea to make a hobbit bus stop and. And so. Yeah, so I started talking with. The art committee before and with Aubrey and, and then also with RVTD. And then we got foiled because the pandemic hit and so everything just dropped and so. I had kind of just moved on and, you know, wasn't really sure if, if it was going to come back as a project. Thanks to Aubrey who approached me and kind of reignited a fire around it and so. So since then, I've been back in touch with RVTD and. And so. Yeah, so happy to talk about, you know, anything about the project. It's a pretty simple idea. It's basically a, a, a small structure. That would be using a mixture of wood and cob. The idea is to have a, a green roof and. So there'd be a, a nice kind of landscaping aspect to it. And, you know, incorporation of some old aged wood and things like that and to give it hopefully some hobbity details. So that's, that's kind of the, the gist and. RVTD, they, so the design aspect of, of it is pretty strange because. It, it's like RVTD doesn't really want to. Get into specifics about design until, as, as I understand, until the city has first approved the project and so. I've created just basically like a really rough design concept. That then is presumably going to have to get modified and tweaked to accommodate specs both for the city and then for RVTD. To deal with like ADA compliance and things like that. So I think those are all the main things. I don't know, Aubrey, if you have other things to add or that I'm missing.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, for that. Yeah, um, Chris came to us the end of two thousand nineteen and like he said. We had, we had taken steps, he'd kind of created a proposal for us and he was working with Page West, who, that's still who you're working with, is that correct, Chris? And, you know, it, it's a unique project and we realized even in arts, it doesn't squarely fall under like this category or that category. Because it's about sustainability and it's about building in a different, you know, way and it's, it is, you know, he, he had this in the, the. The write-up that we had for his proposal, so I'm not sure if you were able to view that, but. But it incorporates working with ODP, the Outdoor Discovery Program, that's a part of the Phoenix Talent School District and. If you're familiar with that program, it's very hands-on and they require parents to volunteer a certain number of hours each year. So there's a lot of parent involvement, there's a lot of student involvement, there's a lot of. Field trip involvement and Chris has actually done Cobb workshops, haven't you, Chris? Because Jack took one in the school district, so he didn't, he didn't mention that, but this is not like a, this is a very. Organic thing for him to be doing because he's already been doing this in the school district of teaching about building in different ways. And in more sustainable ways and adding creative elements and I know he's inside his hobbit house right now. I've, I've seen it, you know, firsthand. And the outside is incredible too. I know you can't see that, but that's the, the cob and the plaster and the colors and, you know, like it's, it's pretty phenomenal. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of options. There's a lot of things you can do with it, just like you were talking about the play structure right before this. There's a lot of feedback and input and ways that, you know, as he said, the design is. It's, it can be a work in progress as it meets guidelines that RVTD would want and also what the city would want in something. You know, it can be a very collaborative effort and, and Chris is great at collaborating, so. So yeah, and he has the know-how to do this and he has other people on his team that are also experts in that area. That he, you know, can bring onboard to do that and it. And it would really involve the community making it too, in one sense, like actually, you know, showing up and teaching them how to do it. And being able to build aspects of the structure in kind of like a field trip form, so. Yeah, it's a very unique project. I love though the idea of talent being the first at a lot of things that are unique and don't seem like something the small town. In Oregon would come up with, that's kind of part of what makes us great. So I, I love the idea that if we do this and, you know, the community and city council is like, you know, this is great. I love that we have this. We've got like more vegetation, we've got more of that cool comp, you know, like, you know, somebody sitting in a bus stop. Has plants growing over their head, that sounds nice to me. And just as a little caveat, Chris walks his kid to school every single day. I see him in my car, admittedly, I'm coming from a little bit further, but I'm, you know, driving two kids and dropping things off. And he is, you know, he's dedicated to this way of life, which I think is really important and speaks a lot to what he's doing. And he's willing to do this very much in a volunteer sense. I keep trying to tell him to build in. A cost for himself or payment for himself for things like this, but he wants to be a volunteer, so. It's a unique opportunity with a cool. Person and vision to work with here, so yeah, if you guys have questions for him on his projects, jump in.
Councilor Clark?
Yeah, sure. Just really appreciate you bringing this project to us, Chris, and, and hanging on to a good idea for several years now. I did some Cobb building workshops about twenty eight years ago, I hate to say that. But back when I was just a fresh young pup. And it is, it is really fun and really beautiful and very organic looking. You know, it's, it's the curves, all the curves are soft, you know, there's not hard angles. It's, it's, it's just really pleasing to be around, to be in a Cobb structure, to sit on a Cobb bench. It's a very cool thing, so I, I, I think this is a really cool idea. Maybe this will be the first of many Cobb bus stops, but the, the, the aesthetic and the experience of. The Cobb bus stop that I'm experiencing compared to the plexiglass. Or the little steel seat on a pole is night and day, I mean. And so, yeah, I think, I think this is really exciting and I love the idea of the community and getting students. Involved and I mean, you really do have to like use your hands with that stuff. I mean. Dig your fingers into it and mix one layer into the next one as you're adding on to it. It's really, it's really fun, so yeah, thanks. Thanks for bringing this to us, Chris.
Yeah.
Councilor Panamara?
Yeah, I echo all of that and I, and I just also want to point out something. I want to thank Aubrey and Chris for bringing this to us, but also, you know. Yeah, I echo all of that. And I, and I just also want to point out something. I want to thank Aubrey and Chris for bringing this to us, but also, you know, and Aubrey, you've said this is how, how this kind of, this kind of effort really helps the mental health of a community. It helps morale. It helps, it helps everything. It's creative and it, and it shows, it shows that we care. I have a question I was wondering, so if you did the bench, could you also like do the structure like a hobbit house? Is that the whole thing?
Yeah, that, that idea would be that it, the whole thing would be hobbit themed. So I, I mean, again, it's going to depend on what the different specs and requirements are, but like I would love to do round shaped windows or something like that and have some curve in the wood. And I even have a little thing added in my, uh, my low-grade drawing of a hanging old kind of carved wooden sign. So, yeah.
I couldn't, I couldn't reach your drawing. It was just like really faint.
Oh, okay.
The Google Doc, I couldn't see much of it.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah. But the idea is for, for this to be very, I mean, it's, it's a one-of-a-kind structure. It's something that would get built totally custom and you just, you, you can't, you couldn't make a second. It will be one, one of a kind. And, and I should add to the, the long-term goal, I, I kind of just felt like you just try to shoot for building one and see how that goes and see how, you know, if it gets approved and if so, how the community likes it. But if it goes well, um, long-term, I, I actually would love to like build, make all the talent bus stops, hobbit bus stops. I mean, that's something that I would be interested in doing long-term, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Council Greider?
Yeah, does RVTD take on, um, once it's built, if there's like repairs needed or some sort of upkeep? That's not your responsibility, is it? Do they take that on?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, I, yeah, so I would not be doing maintenance. My, my understanding is that I think RVTD would do that, but I'm, I'm guessing that would have to get ironed out between the city and RVTD.
I have a question. Um, so, uh, what, what phase of the project are you getting this funding for? Is it for, because the way this potential motion is written is to move direct staff to partner with Chris Hour and RVTD for the bus stop project. And are you guys going into the design phase of the project or what, or the negotiation phase of the project? Is this the final approval of the project?
Uh, are you asking me?
No, I, I, you know what? Yeah, I think I'm asking you and Jordan.
Um, I, yeah, so I'm, I'm not entirely sure. So maybe, maybe Jordan, you could answer better.
From my understanding, you know, we're at the point in the project where it's time to start coordinating with all the agencies involved. So really what's needed right now is for the city to connect with RVTD along with Chris to say, hey, is this possible? What would it look like? What specifications do you have? Who does, who will be in charge of the maintenance? Kind of work out those details to see if the project's possible. I do think, you know, if all thumbs up and it's all moving ahead, that'd be a great time for Chris to return and request council funds for the project. And that can also be a presentation of a design. Yeah, Chris has done an estimate, yeah.
And the agreements and the agreements, right?
Would have to.
Sign in the agreements.
If, if the city, yes. So currently the way bus stops work is they are RVTD maintained. So if anything changes due to the establishment of, of a Cobb bus stop, there'd be an agreement and only council would be able to approve those agreements.
So I, I guess, um, you know, I'm excited about this. I've been excited about it since day one, since, uh, since I first heard about it. And, uh, but I, I'm wondering then if we move towards a decision tonight that it's something more along the lines of directing staff to partner with Chris Hour and RVTD for the Cobb, uh, Bus Cobb bus stop project for the purpose of dot, 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 uh, design and agreements maybe. And that just makes it clear that, that, that this is what we're committing to so far. And that we expect, we would expect then to, to see the rest of it come back at some point. Uh, to finalize, uh, the agreements and that sort of thing. But it's, did I understand you correct that the agreement would come back to us anyway, no matter what, right? So that's a given. So I guess it doesn't really matter. Um, okay, if there's, uh, as long as we know that there is, there is going to be an agreement made, right? I mean, there would be because I think that the question about who would maintain it was probably the, the defining question on that.
Now, I won't know if any agreement will need be made until coordinating with RVTD. Um, I think mostly what staff's looking for is the thumbs up from council that you're interested in pursuing this project. Um, and then city would start that work along with Chris of communicating with RVTD to figure out what actually needs to happen to make it reality.
I just would want to see that we're, we're designing, we're deciding that motion, we're saying that motion in such a way where it does come back, whether there's a uh, an agreement or not. I mean, agreement would trigger it coming back, but if there's no agreement, then, you know, yeah. So anyway, I'll let, uh, I'll let the council figure out if they want to add that into a motion. That's just, just my input. Um, but to reiterate that this is a really exciting idea and how cool would that be? Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. You want to take a stab at that? Let's, anybody? Thank you, Council Clark.
Well, I had to think about the addendum.
Yeah.
See how, see how it comes out here. I moved to direct staff to partner with Chris Hour and RVTD for the Cobb bus stop project and to bring back to council final designs and any necessary agreements.
Um, I have a motion in a second. If I heard it right, I'm sorry, I was distracted. A motion and a second to direct staff to partner with Chris Hour and RVTD, the Cobb project for the Cobb bus stop project. For any designs and agreements?
And to come back to council, come back to council with any, uh, with final designs and any necessary agreements.
Thank you. And to come back, uh, to council with any final designs and agreements. And it's seconded, any discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call please.
Council Clark?
Yes.
Council Penamra?
Yes.
Councilor Greider?
Yes.
Councilor Pesteza?
Yes.
Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Councilor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And I do also want to say that we're grateful for your service, Aubrey. I'm sure we'll have more to say about it in a more formal setting, but tonight I'm saying how grateful we are.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. All of you too. And, and this is exciting. So thank you so much.
All right. And Chris, good to see you. And thank you for, for, uh, for pursuing this, this project. Thank you for, thank you both for not letting it go.
Good, good to see you too. And, and thank you all. I appreciate it.
Yep, former city councilor, Chris Hour. Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is item 11.2 is approval of subcontract to Talent Business Alliance for the Pacific Power Grant. Staff?
Yes. Um, so one of the main findings from the SOU business survey that went out to see how wildfire impacted businesses were covering and what support they could get from the city. You know, one of the main recommendations was the need for a business network to help communicate and elevate business voices as well as to point them to the resources that are available. Back in, I want to say July is when the city of Towne had received a grant from Pacific Power Foundation to help us establish, um, at the time of Main Street Alliance program. Though working with the foundation, um, we have amended that grant to just be a general business alliance. Um, after listening to our business community, we needed some, a little more flexibility in how that was defined. So we currently have $8,000 available to help support the business alliance. And the mayor has actually, um, on her volunteer time as a community member, started the Talent Business Alliance. Um, kind of regrew it out of the chamber. And so we are coming for you all tonight to request approval of a sub-grant contract to provide those funds to the Talent Business Alliance to support them in their startup costs. Those startup costs include the attorney fees needed to help file, um, to move from a 501(c)(6) to a 501(c)(3). Equipment necessary, websites, internet, et cetera. It's more detailed in the stack report. Um, but I do want the opportunity for W to present the Talent Business Alliance to you all. Um, so you can understand, you know, what kind of, um, program we'd be helping support start and what benefits we can hope to see out of it.
Thank you. And before I start my slideshow, um, I do want to also refine or make a finer point of, of the, um, the intention of the $8,000 grant was to actually start up an organization. Um, and so the startup costs that we're looking at for the Talent Business Alliance would be the similar types of startup costs that we would have done, uh, for the Main Street Alliance, which by the way, the urban renewal has, has already engaged in that. So it would be redundant for us to do it again. So, uh, I sent in the slideshow. Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to be able to say next slide, please. So, uh, this is an introduction to the Talent Business Alliance where we believe that talent business is everyone's business. Next slide. So small businesses benefit the community. They create job opportunities and help to keep our, our, our resources local. Uh, they're involved with community. They do lots of great, uh, community building. They help us with our identity. They innovate and help diversify the local marketplace. Um, they're better for our environment. Small businesses, uh, don't have the environmental impact that, that mega business does and uh, businesses can be the heartbeat of the community. And that certainly seems to be the case in the, in the city of Towne. Next slide, please. Uh, COVID-19 and the Alameda Fire, a dual crisis. So, um, City Talent lost 60% of our businesses and I was corrected today. Not, uh, not in, uh, favor of businesses. In fact, 60% is the loss of our brick and mortar businesses. We believe that there are far more in-home businesses that were lost. And hopefully that would be one of the projects that we can get to, to really identify who those folks were, what they lost and, and how we can help them in the long range as part of a strategic plan. The surviving 40% of the businesses, mostly small businesses, are truly struggling, uh, to survive in the wake of the incredible losses of the dual crisis, uh, dual crisis of COVID-19 and the Alameda Fire. Um, I literally heard several businesses in my walkarounds and face-to-face discussions saying that after borrowing money and in, uh, or using up all of their savings to get through these, uh, these, uh, um, crisis times, uh, they're literally on their last leg and, and they need help now. So make no mistake, this crisis is both urgent and critical. Um, the surviving 40 business, uh, 40% of our businesses are Alameda Fire survivors too, with little or no dedicated resources for recovery. And I have to say, one of the most surprising aspects of doing this work, this volunteer work was I immediately, of course, dived in looking for funding and looking for resources that we could bring directly to the businesses. And I was so disappointed and distraught to find that there hasn't really been any kind of focus uh, in, in similar ways that uh, other fire recovery, uh, plans have. So we still have a lot of work to do and I can, and I really have been advocating at, at, uh, with, uh, the state level funds as well as, um, federal level funding to, to try and, uh, to try and correct that. Next, next slide, please. Um, so the SOU research data, SOU students recently, uh, submitted a research project to Towne called the Alameda Fire Recovery. Sorry about the typo. Um, building back business. Um, the data showed that there's a need for a strategic plan. You know, midterm, long-term, uh, there's a lot of things that we can do to help businesses um, with their, uh, to sustain well into the future so that they can be part of, um, our economic revitalizations. Uh, but, but what those, what the data showed in that research project is that there really, it really revealed what the urgent crisis level priorities are. And they are cash assistance, a network and information hub, and rebuilding customer base. Next slide, please. Man, uh, I, this is why I usually send the slides, uh, to edit. So my apologies for all the typos, um, but I did it in, in a hurry this morning. So Talent Business Alliance reactivated. Uh, to better respond to talent's business recovery, the Talent Business Alliance reactivated in March. Uh, two years, after two years of inactivity due to COVID and a lack of board participation. So literally like in the middle of a workday, uh, somebody exited the office and they never returned. So when I opened up that office door, the laptop was still plugged in and turned on and open. And there was a little check sitting there waiting to be deposited. It was like Bodie, California. So we blew the dust off of everything and reestablished, uh, the Business Alliance formerly the Talent Chamber of Commerce. Um, it's important to know that that, uh, organization has been established since 2005. And there was a name change in 2019, just prior to, um, the, uh, the state of the office going inactive. TBA volunteers, uh, seek to partner with other, uh, fund sources whose missions are also to support talent businesses in their recovery. That's kind of our current mission. Next slide, please. Um, so one of the things that we did, uh, TBA held a kickoff event. And, uh, we had the, uh, uh, we had the resources from the SOU, but we, we really wanted to, um, uh, bring the business group together and learn, um, face-to-face what their priorities are and what that, what they actually envisioned those priorities to look like i- in the event that we, um, made a plan. So, um, one of the things that Talent Business Alliance is doing is changing from a 501(c)(6), which is a traditional chamber map model where it's a, called a mutual benefit nonprofit, sort of a pay-to-play. Um, you pay into the organization and the organization supports its members. Um, we wanted to change that to a 501(c)(3). And that's a public benefit nonprofit and that allows us to broaden our reach uh, and our recovery impact to all businesses, no matter their ability, um, to be, to have a membership. We believe that this is a time to infuse uh, resources into our businesses and not with them away from the businesses. Um, so we are in the beginning stages of creating a strategic plan. I have been in discussions with Ford Family Foundation and it looks like they're gonna fund, uh, the strategic plan process and, um, and then, as I said, in April 21st, we held the kickoff event, which was very well attended, over 40 attendees, most of them, most of them businesses. But remember, uh, we believe that talent business is everybody's business and we welcome community members, uh, so that we can really, uh, strive to create a thriving economic culture in this community. So, uh, we gathered more information and refined, uh, recovery priorities and strategies. Next slide, please. Um, so here's some of the data that we took away and it should come as no surprise to anybody that the data from that event, um, it, it validated everything that the SOU survey, um, expressed, but it did, uh, it did really give us some refining um, ideas about how to go about this work. Um, so the way the, um, headlines are set up underneath, there is a number in parentheses and that's the number of votes that we got for each one of the items, uh, in the list below. So, um, a total of 73 people responded to resources as, as a need. And then, uh, the mean average on that is 12.16. And I point that out to you. I bolded that. I pointed that out to you because it, obviously it shows that resources where is the area that got the most energy. But, uh, the other areas that we're close behind were, uh, network, networking and partnerships, uh, marketing and outreach, uh, community events. Uh, is a big, uh, a big one for everybody. And you can see there were 84 responses, uh, to community events. Um, and listing all of the different ideas that we could, that we could continue to, to do here in Towne. And then, uh, the, and then there's literally another ideas column. So what this information, uh, really does is inform us how we can go about um, trying to create a recovery effort, uh, for the immediate urgent crisis. So we can talk a little bit more about. So we can talk a little bit more about that later. But it is for this reason that we're asking for to be the subcontractor for the $8,000 power up Pacific Power grant so that we can open the office and get us going and so that we can really work towards bringing some of these solutions to our local community and doing it very, very soon. Thank you. Let's see, I think the next slide is, yeah, thank you. So Eleanor, I know that you had a chance to reach out to the Ethics Commission, because you are also working on the board. So if you want to report on out on that, this is your opportunity.
Well, thank you. I think I will. So yesterday I called Hillary Marietta of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission and because I had done League of Cities, League of Oregon Cities classes, I already knew the answer. But which confirmed is that because, oh, by the way, I do serve as treasurer for the Talent Business Alliance and Counselor Parry Miller is also a volunteer. We are all volunteers and because we personally do not stand to gain financially from any of these decisions, there is no conflict of interest. There's no actual conflict of interest. There's no potential conflict of interest. And so we don't need to recuse ourselves from any of these decisions regarding money towards Talent Business Alliance.
Thank you. And on that note, I also want to mention that we have other, there are other, we have Samesh Bakshi from Gather, who's also on on the board. And we have three other applicants at this time that are interested in joining the board as well. So we just have to get to our our board meeting when we can process those other applicants or interested parties. Counselor Primraff?
I just have a question. How many hours a week are you spending on this as a volunteer?
Right now, uh, yeah, I don't know, probably a lot, a lot, but really close to full time. But yeah, it's it, you know, it's it's busy work now. I I think it'll level off as we build the board up and and this is a crisis. I mean, the those people are our neighbors and our friends and their, you know, their livelihood is at stake. So I'm I'm really I I'm honored to do the work for my community.
Just wanted to say thanks. Thanks for putting in all those hours.
And back at you. You're 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 helping a lot as well. And so is Council Parry Miller and Samesh has been an absolute rock star. Okay, so with that, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Clark?
I move to approve the subgrantee agreement with Talent Business Alliance for the Pacific Power Foundation Grant and grant the city manager the authority to execute the agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the subgrantee agreement with Talent Business Alliance for the Pacific Power Foundation Grant and the grant and grant the city manager the authority to execute the agreement. Is there any deliberation? Counselor Clark?
Just repeat what I said last night, that as I really appreciate the work that my colleagues are putting into this effort. This is a really meaningful part of how we you know, recover from the fire and build the community that we want. Appreciate it.
I also want to mention in deliberation that we did reach out to Pacific Power Foundation to discuss this subgrantee agreement, and they were very supportive. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Primraff?
Yes.
Counselor Greater?
Yes.
Counselor Pessizzo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is a request for discretionary funds for the Talent Business Alliance and Amplify Program staff.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Talent Business Alliance is hitting the ground running with their establishment, and they have designed a program to help boost and amplify local events and local businesses to help bring customers in. But rather than me trying to summarize a great program, I'm going to hand it off to Darby to share more about the Boost and Amplify program and the asset they're making for discretionary funds.
Thank you. So as a direct response to one of the biggest priorities that was expressed both in the SOU data as well as at the at the kickoff of business forum, rebuilding customer base and talent was a really top priority, bringing that wallet share, that X, that additional revenue into our community and trying to rebuild every business's ability to to to, you know, thrive and sustain. So the name of the program is Boost and Amplify. So these are grants for growth and Boost and Amplify Grant Program responds to the identified urgent priority, which is rebuild customer base. The objectives are to increase the customer base of already planned events. And we we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We just want to make what we do really, really well. And and those events that are historically well attended even better than they were before, even more well attended and 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 really be able to help them promote. So grant recipients would be provided funding in the form of grants in eligible categories to improve attendance of spending visitors. That's one of the objectives. Boost and Amplify was a top preferred program as introduced at the kickoff event. Next slide. So eligible uses for the grants are categorized as music and entertainment. Most of the grants as designed in the program which you have received, the actual grant program as part of your packet. Most of them are matching grants, but there are some outright grants. So music and entertainment is an example. There are some opportunities built into the program that would allow some of the brick and mortar venues to participate in the music and entertainment piece. We know in this, we know that when there's you know, good entertainment with a regional following that we can bring folks from outside of talent to come into our community to spend. Equipment for events. Those events that are have been nonprofit efforts that might be under equipped, they would have an opportunity to get matching grants for additional equipment that that is specified and actually defined in order to help them expand their event. Expansion grants has a definition. Fees and permit grants, we know that when we support nonprofits and other organizations to pay the fees and permits that they that's required by the city or other organizations, we not only support the event that they're putting on, but we also support the jurisdiction or organization that uses those fees to offset some of the financial impacts to their organizations as well. So it's the gift that keeps on giving. And then marketing and promotion, right? So once we grow, help them grow their event, the amplify piece of it is to really just promote it. Provide funding, matching funding so that they can do their promotion, cast a farther net, really promote throughout the region and get folks far and wide to come and spend money and time. Next slide, please. It's an ambitious program. The way we have it designed, we have four marketing campaigns to help with talent rebuilding customer base. And then there's a total of nineteen events that are planned throughout the year. So the four marketing campaigns would be an event talent. These are campaigns that were identified in the kickoff. So they would be event calendar campaign and kiosk. It would be a an expense that we would design to create an info, an informational center, both in the form of a calendar, probably electronic. And then also, there was a a lot of feedback about building a kiosk, an informational kiosk in our in our community and 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 maintaining that and updating that would be part of that cost. Local entertainment venues, providing promotional dollars for to blast the you know, the entertainment that happens in our community. Shop Open for Business Campaign, Talents is Open for Business Campaign. This would be an ongoing campaign throughout the year. And will just be one of those repetitive marketing campaigns, promotional campaigns that include social media, includes advertising through radio and through print ads. And then survivor, fire, fire survivor business piece push. Basically saying that we're 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 standing strong as fire survivors, businesses have a lot to offer and just keep that piece pushing throughout the year to attract attention to what our effort is. And then the events, tomato plant sale, there's two may pop up. There's two, there's two may pop ups in the citywide yard sale. That's that's two events that are happening that we want to support. The art event that's at Momgren is now on that weekend. And so if funded, we will, we will dedicate some funds to help with those events. And then we'll really be able to lean into the talent evening markets, which is going to happen four times this year. Fourth Friday, starting in May. For talent and that would include for talent art walks, which would expand that event. And then also the four tastes of talent. So so just on those nights alone, we would have three three different events going times four. And then the Harvest Festival is 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 under discussion. And we are willing, we really want to discuss partnership with the city on some of those events, Diode de los Martos. Happens every year and is very well attended. It's an all day event, starting with a race into a festival into an amazing night. Lights on Bikes has become an annual event and it's really incredible. And then Holiday Market. And I'm happy to report that we did a really quick study on events and found that the events that have happened so far this year, Chocolate Festival, Cheese Festival, Southern Oregon Sports Show, Pear Festival, and we we call, we reached out to them and asked them about their attendance. And we got answers like from the Chocolate Festival, we ran out of chocolate on Saturday and we went into Sunday without enough product. Cheese Festival said we were expecting three thousand. We got four thousand. A sports show also stated increased numbers and Pear Festival, as we all know, was well attended. So it looks like everybody's saying just to get outside and play. Next slide, please. So Boost and Amplify categories and rules are very well defined. The program is in your packet. They are, there are definition areas like maximum award, not to exceed grants are not going to exceed a thousand dollars. And most of them are matching grants who can apply, business and nonprofits. Application approval process will be based on criteria. And and will will actually have an application process which is required. The selection is based on criteria and the preference, of course, is that we will prioritize our funds to the purpose of rebuilding customer base. Next slide. So here's the budget as it is. We have an awful lot of promotional money. Actually, if you do promoting and advertising, this is, when I showed this to United Way, it was like, are you sure this is all you're going to ask for? There, you know, the 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 big, big, big spends on these things are in entertainment and advertising. But when you divide this over nineteen events and for marketing, I know that, you know, Council Byers is in this in this kind of work and this is not a huge ask. So we're going to be asking for a portion of that tonight from discretionary funds. But I also have been invited to apply with Ford Family Foundation for a piece of this. McQuah Bank has asked me to apply for two different grants for this. So I am, and and there's others. I'm well on my way to getting this fully funded. The fact that there could be some community buy in is is really supporting our effort to to write for grants. Next slide, please. Also, but support for Boost and Amplify has been great and it's been fantastic. Boost and Amplify is a fire recovery program, which is getting really great support. And I'm confident that with a community buy in, as I just said, as a portion of from discretionary funding that we will fully fund the program. And the business, the Business Alliance is seeking a $20,000 allocation of discretionary funds as an investment into the community events. And in order to support bringing events back to talent and really help to boost and amplify and rebuild our customer base. And you may recall from the stat, from the report that I submitted, that this is really how the discretionary fund was set up in the first place and historically used. It was really to boost and amplify community events. And so this is the first time this organization's come to the city for funding, and it wouldn't be the first time that the city has funded this organization. There were funds allocated to the Southern Oregon Grape Fair fairly regularly and other events. So yeah, not reinventing the wheel, just asking for the city to throw in a little, a portion of this budget. And and we'll get we'll get to boosting and amplifying here in the community immediately. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate you, you guys giving me a chance to 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 present the really exciting work that a a really, really good hearted team of volunteers is working really hard to get done. Thank you. Any questions? Jordan?
I just wanted to share from the kind of staff perspective of how excited we are that there is a business alliance, it's going to be so active and helping reach out to community members. I know throughout the year, we've been giving city funds to help promote events as businesses come and ask for them. But having the alliance will just allow that many number, that many more businesses that are aware of that and that having access to do it. Because that's something I know that that I've been struggling with is how to outreach those businesses to communicate what's available for them. So excited to see this program presented.
Yeah, and we thank you for mentioning that. We really have a great communication system already stood up where we have direct communication with the businesses. So whatever we're doing, whatever we're going to be presenting to the community, we'll be able to really support communication with. And that includes the the so ready, the so ready grants that are that are currently being processed and the ones that will be being processed upcoming. So we've gotten a lot done in a short period of time. And like I said, I couldn't have, you know, this is not a one man show for sure. Everybody has really leaned in hard to get this done because everybody knows how how important this is. Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Byers?
Um, yeah, I moved to allocate $20,000 of the council discretionary funds for the Talent Business Alliance Boost and Amplify Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to allocate $20,000 of just council discretionary funds for the Talent Business Alliance Boost and Amplify Program. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Primraff?
Yes.
Counselor Greater?
Yes.
Counselor Pessizzo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you again so much for your support for talent businesses. I I, this is a really great opportunity and I I will be reporting back and providing providing the city with any information that they need along the way and 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 I look forward to talents are really good news as we move along. So thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is commission and committee reports. Anybody? So since we're on the topic, one of the things that I, we've talked about before, and maybe we can make an agreement is that as we're getting more, you know, more on our feet with full committees and commissions and and liaisons and chairs are attending fifth Wednesday training. And I really think we're we're headed on the right track of really empowering our committees and commissions to making really good decisions. And and it might it might serve us all well if we get into the same kind of reporting that the staff does on our committee and commission things where we just send in a paragraph of what 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 our last meeting came up with. And this doesn't Came up with, and this doesn't obviously include recommendations, that's more official process. But you know, just the things that we talked about, that you talked about at the committee or commission levels or the things that. The things that you brought from the city to them and the things that they brought to you that goes to the city. And this might be a good way to open up the communication night. I just wanted to throw that out there again and see if there's any, any thoughts around that. Would that be any easier than, you know, these oral reports? Council buyers, you want to weigh in?
I really support that and I would request actually that we continue to add our monthly reports to a living document. So that. We, or should we not be filling that role anymore? Someone else who is can scroll back through and see those updates all in one location and just get a feel for the, the trajectory of various projects and discussions that have come up. I think it might save time down the road and really improve understanding about how. You know, a project got to the point where it was or all the consideration that went into it.
Anybody else? Anybody object to that? Is that onerous or, you know? We just have a central, so Jordan, if we did something like that, do you want to think about it? And, and let us know where to send that into or what would be the kind of how the staff could manage funneling that in or?
Yeah, let me play, you know, my first thought is we could do a, a living document on OneDrive potentially or SharePoint if we all have access. And if we don't, we can figure out a way that staff can be the, the middleman writers of it too. So yeah, we'll work on logistics.
So does anybody have a recap from any of their meetings? Counselor Clark, counsel Greider?
Yeah, um, just that. Arbor Day Foundation requested another meeting. With Chair Mike Oxendine and myself week before last, saying they have a local funder that's interested in funding another. Phase of the original proposal that we sent to them. Over a year ago, so looking at fall, more details to come. And I'll come back to. Council with, with more details as they, as the ideas develop.
Counselor Clark, can I ask you? Just if you have had, is, is the committee discussing developing any master plans or strategic plans for? You know, it seems to me that if we have a plan that we can introduce into the budget process and ask for larger funds. Or when grants come in, we can channel those grants towards master plan. It seems to me like we could get much more bang for the buck. I, I, at the risk of using the first thing that comes to my head. So, you know, it seems like we could get a lot more from the situation if the committee or commission has the capacity to dedicate them. To a master plan. And while I'm asking that, I, I have it in a note here to also ask staff. What it would take to dedicate some staff to that strategic planning process so that we could act, so we could get something that would be. Fun, you know, something that we could build funds towards. So my question to you first, Jason, and then to Jordan, second.
Yeah, um, what, what I know about that and, and Jordan may actually know more. But there's a program through the National Park Service. To help communities like ours develop a strategic urban forestry plan. And I believe Mike has made contact with that person. But I have not. So that, that idea of developing a strategic urban forestry plan is in the works. It's in the early stages right now. But look forward to that developing.
Yeah, I, I would imagine that if we can get some staff engaged in it, if that can, if that process gets stacked, we can move it along. I mean, that is what's going to make the difference with talent business alliance too, is we, you know, we, we have the ability to get that funded. And, and get somebody that can help us build, build the strategic plan. And that, that just moves us along and, and that strategic plan is what we can use to, to capture funding. The one, the one, I just wanted to mention this to everybody, that one of the things that Betty Wheeler was really good at, former city manager Betty Wheeler. Was she, she, you know, sort of queued up all the committees and commissions to dig into their plans. I, I know that because I was on parks when all that happened. And she would get us to dig in our plans and find things, find the priorities, work with staff to find the priorities. And on parks at that time, it was Betty. And we would define the priorities and those from our master plans and those priorities would be brought to discussion in the fall. And late fall and early winter. And by that time she would have all of that gathered from all the committees and commissions and she would take it to, to the beginning of budget process, which usually was goal setting. And so that's how, you know, we were able to ask for big, large amounts for projects. Because we were, we were in this kind of chronological order of diving into our plans, pulling out what, what, what we wanted to get funded. And then she carried it into the goal setting and budget process at that time. And it seems to me that it all happened in the late fall and, and early December. And I think we have an opportunity, all of us to figure out if we have plans to work with, how can we do that? And, and if we don't have plans to work with, how can we get them ready for that period of time? So that we can build, you know, large capital improvement. Projects into our budget asks that for the each respective committee and commission. So I just, you know, I just feel like we can head towards that. We're in a position where we're sort of. Not, you know, chasing after ourselves at this moment, like we have been, just because of the fire and all that stuff. Where we can just take a breath and, and get to our planning process. And I just want to really encourage us all to think about that and head towards that. So I'm sorry about the, but, but it's been on my mind for a while. And I, and, and I, I say that because I have seen as the city do great big projects because of that kind of taking it from an adopted plan. Already adopted, already approved and, and moving it into the budget process where things get done really. Really methodically and with larger sums. And where there's not money in the city, the city knows how to chase the, the grants that come up at that time of year. So it just was really beautiful to see it work. All right, council writer?
Yeah, just to report that Together for Talent didn't have a quorum at their April meeting. And I believe I wasn't able to attend the May meeting yesterday. Counselor Penomoff filled in for me, but I don't believe they had a quorum. Then either, it's always nice to chat with Charles though. So I was going to check in with him about possibly moving the meeting time a little later. I don't know if that would help or just kind of brainstorming the meet at four. And I don't know if folks are not quite finished with work yet or maybe a five o'clock would help, but. Yeah.
Right, sounds like a great solution. Counselor Penomoff and then Counselor Pesteza?
Yeah, that's right, I did fill, fill in for Together for Talent, there was not a quorum. They, I did pass along that they were, they were pretty thrilled at the research that Council Greider provided on composting. So they're excited about that. And Lynn Liggins made a comment about, she felt like all the, the community was starting to wake up. So I thought I'd share that. The other meeting I went to was with the Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Association. Which deals with federally funded transportation projects. There is a, I'm on the policy committee, there's another committee called the Public Advisory Committee. And a report, there was a report about that, that we voted to direct staff to look at modifying the membership of that community, that committee. To add possibly another position for climate justice. They do have like a position for low income people, a position for bike and ped, but nothing that, that for climate justice. And that's it.
Okay, Counselor Pesteza?
Yeah, well, I went to the planning commission and they were supposed to discuss the changes to their bylaws because of the quorum issue. But they didn't have a quorum, so it got kicked down the road.
Kicked down the road where it came directly to council, right? So they, did they miss their opportunity? Is that what happened?
No, well, the way they left it at the meeting was they're going to try and pick it up at the next meeting. Yeah. So not, not much happened, it was a pretty short meeting.
Okay, Jordan?
Just want to make a quick clarification on that. Planning Commission has reviewed the ordinance and given input to it. Counselor proceeds of timeout is that they're reviewing their bylaws now. And if they make changes to the bylaws, those will come before council for approval as well.
Okay, Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes, um, I just wanted to mention, as the mayor mentioned before, that our chair Aubrey. Has decided to step away from that position. So she's been the chair of T-PAC for about five years. So she's been doing great work for that time. But she's needing to step away to focus on family and her own art. So we're happy for her, but we will miss her greatly.
There's, I, I will say in the 20 years that I've served this community, there have been fewer chairs who have been more productive than Aubrey in her, in her time. She is just a powerhouse. And I, you know, I hope we, you know, do something formal for her and her great efforts. And, and really probably set the table to do something formal for everybody who serves the community might, might be a good idea. And that might be a good discussion for Jordan and I to take up at one of our Monday catch up meetings. Okay, I, and Counselor Byers, do you have anything from parks? I do, if you don't.
Well, we haven't had a meeting in between our last council meeting and this one. Where we covered most of the updates and discussed them pretty extensively.
Well, I had a, a coffee with Donna on Saturday, it was a great conversation. And we, we contemplated the idea of having a study session, a joint study session with parks and, and the city. Just to talk about. Some of the, I, I don't know, what it sounded like, maybe red flags in the master plan or what's no longer appropriate after the fire. Or just really to pour over the master plan itself. And have, have you or Clark or Jordan or Brett heard anything along those lines that that might be fruitful to do that? Or there's, there?
I had. Spoken up in my own conversation with Donna, but not at a Parks and Rec Commission meeting that I felt like that would be. Useful and Jordan and I have spoken about that again. But you know, it's not an official meeting, so I was unsure of what counted for updates here as part of a commission.
Yeah, I mean.
I personally think that it would be very valuable.
A joint study session, yeah. Jordan, what are your thoughts on it or Brett?
Um, I think that would be a great thing for all of our commissions that have a master plan to do. And could really fall well with hitting that fall Betty Wheeler pathway as well. Of dive and see what's been accomplished and then to reprioritize and identify where the plan no longer fits community needs.
Was there anything that came out of there? I mean, you know, we're hoping that they could get some priorities pulled out of the master plan for this budget cycle. And I know they were running up against a deadline. Was there anything that you guys were able to identify or did you set, did you do a set aside for parks anyway or?
Yes, they did provide us a list of priority projects to focus on over this next year. We've been able to incorporate most of them into the budget. They were focused around things like specifically parks and benches, signage, access and things like that.
That's good news. Okay, I went to RV cog and there was no agenda item. And when they don't do that, they do an agenda build during the meeting and there was no agenda build either. So all the cities and jurisdictions just did updates. And I think the one that I was, that I took away from my, you know, I had so many things to talk about. I, I made a list and I really represented talent well. But I would say also that the one, the one conversation that I was really interested in is Alert Wildfire. And that's a program where they're setting up cameras throughout the Oregon forests to, you know. Warn, flag and warn, early detection of potential fires starting. And it's, it's an ongoing build. Apparently I didn't know this, that they, this is a very well built out program in California already. And, and it's just really sort of expanding into our area. And I think Washington has a really strong alert wildfire system as well. So I thought it would be kind of cool to have, you know, some, have an update here at the city sometime to talk about it. I thought it was really informative and really interesting. And I, I know that Shady Cove, or not Shady Cove. What's the one between here and the coast? I'm sorry, I'm tired. What's that city up there? You know, where they have great sausages, Taylor's Cave Junction, I'm sorry. Cave Junction has been able to participate through grants and stuff to have nearby. And I, I just feel like if there's an opportunity for, for our city to learn, learn how to get involved in that program and have some of that stuff up in the Wagner Creek area. Where people could really get trapped in a fire. I don't know, there might be room for further discussion. So I'll, I'll probably touch base with Anne Marie and see if we could have, set up a conversation and just really look at wildfire alert for our area as well. And see if there's grant funding maybe for us. But it's cool, it's a really cool program. Okay, that was it for me, that was the meeting I just went to. So if there's nothing else, go ahead and move to other business. So, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Penomoff?
No, I'm, I raised my hand for other business.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So I found the link of the other play structure that I was looking at. And I, I did send it along to Brett, but this is way too much responsibility for me. So I was wondering if I could just show it to you all, you could tell me it was awful or. Can I just drop it in the chat? Maybe you could show it on the screen. And I can also. Give you the, the other one by comparison, although I have to say the other one looks better in the packet because it's prettier colors. Brett chose good colors.
Oh my God, it's a website to all of them. I mean, I, I'm going to really discourage everybody from going shopping.
It's so much fun. So there's two things, so this side is, so it's a little bit shorter, it's a little bit smaller. The, the, this, yeah, the other side, the, the slides to the first one are definitely better. And this one doesn't have monkey bars and other things, but monkey bars, I could only do those for like two minutes and that was it. But see how it's got that little balancey thing that you can try to walk on and the little kind of hobbit-esque toadstools or lily pads or whatever you call them. I don't know, that just, it just seemed like, you know. It's what I would plan, this is why I should not be making these decisions. Anyway, so you other people have little kids.
I certainly know that.
Yeah, I guess it really depends on deciding what age group you're aiming at. Because I'm thinking when my kids were young, like they say in here, five to 12. By the time my kids were, you know, nine or 10, they'd be going, oh, this is boring. You know what I mean? Where the other ones seemed like it was a little more. And I don't know what they say the age range is for the original proposal.
It's the same for both. In fact, I'll drop the other link in here so you can see all, all the characteristics.
Maybe we should get both and put one in option one and one in option two.
Like, don't get a start started, Dave, the next thing you know, there's going to be playgrounds and people's backyards.
I would like to have every council meeting, just an hour of going through these and just discussing them and deliberating.
When our kids were young in New Hampshire, we had a playground in the house. So you know, it wouldn't be that odd to have one in everyone's yard.
It would, my kids were little, we had just moved to Italy and there was like this big basement. So I took all the boxes full of stuff and I made like a maze. So I took all the boxes full of stuff and I made like a maze, a crawl through thing. That was fun.
Um, I would just throw this idea out there. Oh, pardon me.
Oh, I was just going to say, it's interesting that they say they're for the same age range. They look like they're for two very different motor skill creatures.
Uh, Jordan?
Well, I was going to say I can, I'll connect with, um, Brett and his team this week. You know, we might have to get an update on our price quote anyway, um, just because of the timeframe of when we last got it. And we'll see if maybe there's a, a local classroom that can take a quick survey for us between the two, to get a little input from the folks that would actually hopefully be climbing on the thing. Not that Counselor Penomriff, I would like to discourage you from climbing on this. Absolutely would want to see you playing on the playground.
It's, 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 you're going to be near my house. Of course I'm going to play up.
I would just say, uh, I, 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 again, I appreciate, um, the, what this conversation brought to the table about, uh, further community input. But if it, if it were to risk this project in any way to do a survey of any kind, I, I certainly would discourage that. Um, and we can always do it moving forward. So, um, I do also agree. I like those little lily pads. I'm, 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 I am with Eleanor on, on my, what my favorite park is, but but I am not happy to make that decision. So, um, all right, uh, is there anything else for other? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, address the discussion at the last meeting regarding the, uh, landscape plan for Cameron Springs. Uh, in retrospect, um, it's clear that, uh, a, a formal and complete, uh, presentation of that would have been appropriate and, uh, that just, um, was not on the rate, on my radar in the context of everything else going on in my life and, um, and, uh, I was tired by that point in the meeting and was, uh, finding difficulty in finding the right words to, uh, participate, uh, effectively in that discussion. Um, but, uh, just want to say that the, uh, the need to increase, uh, to improve, increase, um, environmental and ecological, uh, equity in the community of talent is an often discussed priority within the Talent Urban Forestry Committee. And, uh, I wish, uh, I look forward to, uh, discussing more um, with this council, how to implement that goal effectively. That's it.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I just feel like there's no better place than in a plan and, um, where there's just no, you know, no room for, uh, for misunderstanding and, and I, I also, um, was tired and, uh, uh, and had a difficult time with that conversation. And, and, um, so, um, I just feel like if we can, uh, if we can get to a place where we can provide what, uh, the forestry needs, uh, in particular, um, to get a strategic plan in place, I think that would be a huge and powerful tool for our community. In what I think is going to be one of the biggest projects moving forward, which is to reforest the community after the fire. Um, and if we could do it with a plan and that plan was already adopted, there's just nothing but, you know, forward motion in a situation like that. Counselor, I, I, so I'm beating it, uh, you know, beating the drum. I, I apologize, but I probably, uh, I'll probably lay it down now. Um, Counselor Penomriff?
Yeah, I just wanted to really applaud, um, your, the Urban Forestry Committee, um, for just the agility and the expertise and the heart and, and just the sweat y'all bring to, um, to all these efforts. Um, and, and I think that I, I, I don't think your reward should be more of the same. I think, I think that, that we're mature enough. Um, our community is clear that this is a huge priority for us, um, just to echo what the mayor says, a, a plan and a, a good, solid budget. Um, so anyway, I, I just want to thank you for what you've done so far. And, and really we should just make it, make it easier for you.
Thank you. I will, uh, pass your comments on to the committee members.
I'd like to see hundreds of thousands of dollars thrown at it in, 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 in the course of, of time. Um, okay, uh, anything else for other? I, I do want to really quickly touch on um, the topic that we heard earlier from John Norman. Uh, I, he got a tough break with technology and, um, it did, there were some really cool elements, what we could see, but I don't think we had an adequate presentation to, um, to make any kind of recommendations or decisions on how to pursue a grant or provide um, space for a project like that. So I, I just would toss it out there. Um, John is still with us, so I, I, you know, I don't want to close the meeting without addressing it, um, but I would toss it out to the council. Do we want to invite John back for a more formal presentation? Um, uh, and my feedback to John would be, I, 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 um, don't think that we would be in a position to make a decision of or even really head towards a decision of that gravity, um, without, uh, a more formal presentation. So, is it the council's desire to have that more formal presentation or? Any feedback? Counselor Penomriff?
Well, I'm really curious about what staff has to say. I think that, um, during the presentation, it sounded like the grant deadline was the first of June. Is that right? I don't, I don't think it's realistic. Um, I mean, I'm curious about the topic, but I think, uh, formal presentation is not the same thing as, uh, a grant application. Um, it's, you know, and I think if, if it, you know, with the, with the grant deadline looming so soon, I would have expected, you know, maybe, uh, a written report or something, um, more formal at this point. I, I think the city manager, um, Jordan is in a much better position to, um, know, uh, what all, um, have, the work that, and research that has been done in preparation um, for applying to this grant. But, um, I don't think we're in a position to say, um, oh sure, here's parcel. Um, I'm, I'm not, it, it seems like there's a, a lot, several more steps along the way, but I'll, I, I'd really like to hear what you're.
Pardon?
I do think, um, to share now, John, that I understand the application deadline you're facing. I think one of the struggles is that for this property, even to work if we were to move forward, it would need to be rezoned. And the actual process for rezoning of all the ducks aligned would take more than the time that we have for that application cycle. And so I, I do think, um, you know, what has been, what you flagged, John, was, is not a potential property for use, um, given the timeline given. Um, but John, I'm always happy to meet one-on-one as well to learn more about, um, the vision and the project and, um, learn more in that way.
So John, I'm just going to say that we don't entertain a discussion at this point in the agenda. Um, and, and in fact, our, our council rules don't entertain much discussion, uh, in general. Um, but you are invited by Jordan to, um, to, you're welcome to a one-on-one. And if, uh, if there's further discussion to be had, we trust that Jordan will bring, bring that back to the council. But at this time, yeah, I just think we're not in a position to, uh, to make any kind of commitments of any kind. So, um, with that, uh, if there's nothing else, um, nothing else?
I, I see that, uh, John Norman has his hand up in the attendees. I don't know.
And I'm, I'm,
Oh, that's what you were, sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
See, this is past our bedtime.
It's okay. And, and you know, he's, and I feel comfortable about that especially because Jordan just invited him to, uh, a face-to-face. So, and I know Jordan and knows more than any of us about, uh, what the particulars are. So I'm totally confident there. Um, okay, if there's nothing else, um, don't forget to miss the, uh, the upcoming meetings list. Thank you so much for that on the, uh, agenda. That is a super helpful element of our agenda. Thank you, everybody. And we will see you next time. Meetings adjourned at nine twenty-four.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you, Hector. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jordan. Have a good night.